I'd like to open up the meeting of March 6th, 2025. Now call this meeting into session. First on the agenda is the approved minutes from January 2nd.
Second.
We can do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. The consulting engineers report, Mr. Kevin Hamilton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mostly prepared to speak about the projects on the agenda tonight. I did want to mention at the last meeting, it was asked to be, for the board to be provided a map of the subdivisions within the town, so working on that. Just, you know, have to confirm and maybe we could talk in between meetings how far back we want that to go, or, you know, if it's active or recent. You know, just, just so get a better idea what we want to show, or, you know, how many.
Have you taken a ride up to any of them?
Yeah.
In the last couple of weeks, we've had snow. There isn't much left on a few of them. Okay.
Yeah. So if it's active ones, you know, just something that, it just wanted to acknowledge this being worked on. But for the other projects in town, I spent most of the time this week on looking at these two, so.
Well, we can discuss them when we open it up.
Yep.
Okay.
So I have nothing else to add.
Any members have any other questions? Kevin? Calling our clerk, Nancy, do we have any new submissions for subdivisions or site plans?
We do not.
We do not. Moving forward. These are both informal discussions, one is for the modification of a site plan review, 156, 180 Main Street, Chase Bank.
Good evening. For the record, Nick Doomhurst with Bowler. It's been two weeks since we were last in front of you. Randy Marin with my office was here two weeks ago. He kind of got me caught up to speed as far as the conversations that took place that night. So I guess just to start off, you will notice a separate alternate plan is shown on this as to what was presented at the last, at the last meeting. These changes really came, I understand, that Beta had given Randy a sketch of just some, some of their thoughts as far as ways to relocate some of the new parking to sort of get it off that main drive aisle. So we took that sketch, the, the general theme of what our current plan is showing is really close to what Beta sketched. There is some slight differences, you'll notice that the row of eight spaces, they're actually angled spaces, 45-degree parking with a one-way drive aisle. And the reason for that, rather than doing exactly what Beta had recommended, the zoning regulations do have that 80-foot queue requirement for the bank, which we had to maintain, which Beta's sketch, it was a little unclear as to whether that would actually provide that 80 feet, given that the parking would sort of be along what we would be calling the drive-through queue. So we decided to sort of do two different designated lanes, one being the drive-through and that westerly one being designated for that one-way drive aisle serving these eight spaces. And then we also took the two spaces that were sort of in this corner here and relocated those to be up along the building. So this layout, it removes any vehicles, you know, backing into or maneuvering to and from that main drive aisle, which I know is sort of the biggest concern that we heard from this board, just from a safety standpoint. So we do see a significant improvement there. We've also, I understand it was requested that we send, Kevin, I think it might have come from you, the vapor mitigation system for the subs lab, as well as the fire suppression calculation. So we have submitted those along with this plan to Brianna. I guess with that being said, I'd open it up, I'm not sure if you folks have had a chance to review in detail, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
I do have one from the building commissioner.
Sure.
You want to take a look at what he's got here in there?
Yeah.
This walkway here?
Mm-hmm.
And the curb?
Yep.
Here?
Yeah, so.
So this, we take it?
Absolutely, that would be, that would be gone.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, what we're showing, the red is sort of the alterations, and this is just overlaid on to our approved site plan, just to show kind of the, the changes.
So what happened with all that beautiful landscaping that sold us in the beginning?
Yeah, so the landscaping is, is, it has decreased.
Is there any way of making that up?
So, you know, we haven't submitted a formal updated landscaping plan yet.
Okay.
We would sort of do that, what I think, and I don't know if this was discussed at the last meeting or not, but I, I know what was discussed with Brianna late last week when we submitted this plan, was that we would look to, to issue a fully updated plan set that would include those updated landscape changes, once we sort of got this board's approval on these, these layout changes. But to your point, we'll certainly add, you know, as much landscaping, you know, plantings, ground covers, things like that, as we can, sort of in this green space. I would just point out that, you know, though this proposed layout change does provide less landscaping than, than was approved, it still provides a significant.
Right now, you're not beating any requirements of, of the subdivision plans. What was it, I think it's 25% of the lot? This does, however, save you from filing for a stormwater, I believe. But Kevin does have some questions that we'll get into on that.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Excuse me, I have a question. Over on the side here where, where the two, the two roads meet?
Yep.
Is the curbing, the curbing stays?
You're saying up here?
Uh, no, no, to, to the, the other end, yeah.
Right here, yeah, so it'll be.
So the curbing stays all the way around to the drive-through entrance?
Yes, yeah, so it kind of wraps around and then picks up where the red meets the black at this corner. It's sort of, that's where it trims off, so this black portion would not exist. It, it sort of loops around in that way.
So that, so I don't know if you'd call it the first or the eighth space, would that really be able to even technically work then?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could pull in, I don't know if you mind if I write on this, but you could pull in, you know, this curving won't be there.
That's, that's what I meant, that more.
Yeah, so this is all, this is all.
It made sense that it wasn't going to be there, but I just.
Yeah, sure, yep.
Mr. Long, any questions?
So we still have these same parking spots that we talked about the last, last meeting, right?
They're facing the opposite.
Yeah, so they're, they're just facing away.
I put a question, where did these two pieces of paper come from?
So it looks like this is a black and white version of that plan.
That may have come from Nancy.
Yeah.
That was sent on a PDF, Bob.
So they're still backing out into the, into the main connecting road down to Square One Mall.
Oh, there's going to be a curb there, Bob.
Yeah, so.
There's going to be a curb in front of that, that's going to take us all the way down to Creason Island down at the stop sign. The.
Yeah, so Bob, if I may, there's a.
This curb is going to stay there, right?
This curb stays, so the vehicles would access these spaces from in through here, and this would be a one-way drive aisle. So there would be no vehicles, you know, accessing the spaces from this main drive aisle.
So, all right, you've got two lanes going through here.
Sure, this one, this is the drive-through designated lane. So this is for the drive-through ATM, this is for the vehicles accessing these spaces.
So people using these spaces are going to walk across those two lanes?
Well, so we are, so we're going to have sidewalk here that goes to a crosswalk here that brings them out.
A sidewalk here?
Yep.
Are going to walk across two lanes?
Yeah, I mean, the, the intent would be for them to walk to the sidewalk, so kind of walking along the top of those spaces.
You got to walk there and tell them, hey, use the sidewalk? You know what they're going to do, they're going to get out of their car and walk across.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I mean. Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but, I mean, I would say that that condition exists in, in really most parking lots.
So the through lane exclusively for coming in from this other roadway over here, is the through lane then is going to end at the red line, right? Because you need a travel lane in here.
Yep, so this is the through lane here, so it's really this area here.
And they're going to exit.
They exit here, so the same exit as the drive-through traffic. It's similar to, before we had that, that bypass lane. It, it's similar to that in the sense that, you know, traffic, it'll be the bypass lane or the sort of U lane in this situation adjacent to the drive-through ATM lane.
And we have a previously approved plan?
Correct.
And this is all about what?
I'm sorry?
This is all about what, just extra spaces?
Yeah, so, and we've issued a letter, and we've had a handful of discussions on this, but really it's from the landlord having specific tenant requirements and tenant needs that they need to maintain, and these 10 additional spaces maintain those, those agreements that they have in place with existing tenants.
I've got a word for that, but I won't use it on TV, all right? This all should have been thought of, we approved the plan last fall without this.
Understood.
And we were told at the time that the tenant wanted more spaces. Then since, in subsequent meetings, we've been told that the other renters wanted more spaces. They want the bank taking up this basis here. For God's sakes, why are we doing this now after we've already voted a plan?
Yeah, so, so.
And knowing that, but you're, you're going to shrink out here, the landscape area that we had talked about, and on the last plan I saw a couple of weeks ago, it showed that snow was going to be dumped there.
Yeah, I mean, we feel, and, and we'll provide this in the full plan set, we feel there's adequate, there's multiple, you know, different areas where, where snow can be, can be stored, to provide adequate snow storage really throughout this entire project area.
Now, I still don't think it's a safe situation, getting out of my car over here and walking this way.
So I guess, Bob, my only question would be what, what's the difference between that situation and, you know, if you're parking here accessing the Buffalo Wild Wings, isn't that, you know, you sort of have that situation in all?
It is, I don't have to say yes to that.
Okay.
So anything that happens doesn't come from this board at this point in time.
Okay, understood.
If there's things that have been done in the past, that's back there.
Okay, I guess I would just add that, you know, it's, in, in really every parking lot that's designed and, and approved, really on every project, you're not going to have, you know, a designated pedestrian walkway or a crosswalk from each space to the, the building entrance, so.
No, but it's much safer to park here and walk into the bank, than just to park over here and cross travel lanes.
Sure, and that's why, you know, we would direct the pedestrians to this, this sidewalk and then this straight crosswalk.
But you know I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
I mean, you, come on.
You drive. Yes.
And I do too. If I'm parking over here, I'm sure as hell not, sure as hell not going to walk over here and come across this little crosswalk. I'm going to walk straight over to here where the entrance is.
Okay. I mean, we'd be happy to, we can leave this straight crosswalk in place too. It'll sort of conflict with these spaces, but we can stripe it, you know, in multiple, so there's one sort of closer to that end.
By the way, how, how high is this retained, retained island, you're going to be up? The wall, it's going to be a wall, right, if some?
No, no, it's just curving.
Just grid curving?
Yeah, the, the grades are relatively flat out here, there's, you know, no significant grading or walls associated with this.
Now, I think if you tell me, I'm not crazy about it.
Nick, at the last meeting, Randy mentioned that without these spaces, the owner would not want to continue on the project.
Correct.
But we have not seen that kind of in writing, we've seen there is a request. You know, I think for the board, in order to justify a change, ideally it's something quantifiable and not a preference. You know, the, the table here does break down, thank you for providing that, the spaces of each business within the whole 16 and a half acre property. You know, where the previous design was in compliance. You know, was there any confirmation of that from the owner that this project?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say is.
Continue?
At the first meeting, we were asked to provide a letter from the landlord given, you know, to, to sort of describe their reasoning as to why these spaces are, are needed, and we did do that. So, I mean, I guess, like.
Well, if I could interject, the numbers on that first letter represented what was on the plans, and then the letter was revised.
Yeah, so the letter that the landlord provided.
So it was a little confusing.
Sure, absolutely, which is why we did issue a supplemental updated letter, because I agree, the initial letter that was submitted was, it, it wasn't very clear as to, as to the reasoning, I, I do think that the supplemental letter that was provided did sort of further describe it, but, I mean, the, the, you know, to make it as, as clear and as blunt as I possibly can, from, from what we've been told by the landlords, that these spaces are absolutely necessary, these 10 additional spaces are absolutely necessary for, for the landlord to build this project and to get, and really the reason for that is, for the landlord to build this project, they need all third-party tenant approvals, meaning every other tenant in the, in the parcel has to sign off, and he won't obtain those approvals without these 10 additional spaces.
But how was that not realized during the original application?
So, so there was a lapse, because the landlord wasn't the applicant, it was Chase Bank, there was a lapse in, in the landlord and the specific person with the landlord that was supposed to be reviewing the plan. So the, the plan just wasn't, there, there was a lapse in review on, on the landlord and miscommunication between Chase and the landlord, where ultimately, the layout that was approved is what was moved forward and pushed through the permitting process, but the landlord, or, or again, a certain person within the landlord's company, who was supposed to have a final say on the layout, didn't necessarily do that prior to us getting that approval.
You know, because what if the answer to the landlord is, there's requirements on landscaping, sorry, you know, we, we agreed to follow it, we know you want the spots. And I, when talking to the percentages, I'm not quite clear on if it is 25%, because part of this table is kind of, you know, average or dividing by the whole.
Yep, yeah, because it's one parcel.
The whole area, so I don't know if we're within our right to look at just the limit of work and whether that landscape percentage would apply.
Yes, or respectfully, I, that, I don't believe that is the case, it's, it's looked at on, you know, a parcel as a whole basis.
If that's, you know, I'm not prepared right now to debate that.
I may have been wrong when I said 25, I think it's 35. 35% of the lot in East Fife Green Space.
So I believe it's the maximum impervious coverage is actually 85%. Again, the existing development excluding this Chase Bank provides 78.2, and that's impervious, and we're actually decreasing that, that impervious surface number, meaning we're increasing the amount of landscaped area by about 1%. And again, that's a, a part that, that considers the parcel as a whole, which the parcels.
That, that's the old plan.
Uh, yeah, well, so I guess kind of what I'm getting at is, given that the parcel is so large, it's about, you know, almost 17 acres, it, it's really kind of splitting hairs from a percentage standpoint, when you look at the overall parcel between what was approved and what we're, what we're proposing now. Though I understand, you know, from a respective, when you look at the area and kind of take the limit of work, for example, yes, you can notice a, a decrease in, in pervious surfaces, but when you look at the parcel as a whole, which is what the zoning by law requires, it, it is minimal and it continues to meet all, all zoning requirements.
You will provide a drawing with the curbs?
Yeah, so again, our plan is.
Curbs gone and?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll provide a fully updated plan set that will, you know, it'll, it'll look like what's shown in, in here in red, but it will just incorporate that entirely.
To be brutally honest, I'm not crazy about that corner at the stop sign where it interjects.
Right here?
They're using that for a snow pile.
Okay, we can, like I said.
It's going to block the view.
Yep.
Of the traffic coming the other way.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, we can absolutely relocate that snow storage.
I noticed them the other night doing snow removal, and they were piling up on the hill towards Main Street.
Okay.
So, is that what you supped up as well? Yeah, that's the way I've always remembered of doing it.
Yep, yeah, we can relay that to them.
I'd like to see that go to Green Space, I'd like to see a little bit more, there was, the last drawing showed stone in place of grass.
Correct. So that's sort of a, a fire code item, it's, they put stone along the edge of the building in case, rather than mulch, in case something catches fire, there's sort of a buffer between the building.
So why can't we put stone and grass?
I'm sorry?
Why can't we do the, do the barrier for stone, if that's the case, and have some grass going around some of this area?
Yeah, so part of that is.
I know it's upkeep and it's landscaping and.
So it's actually not that, it's, so, so Chase is, they're very lead-conscious.
Yep.
And they're, they try to hit certain lead standards and having drought-tolerant plantings and ground covers, meaning they don't need a permanent irrigation system, that's sort of what they're striving for, and that's why we have those specific plantings.
I understand what Chase is looking for, but understand what the town is looking for, for Green Space on these, these projects. So that's one that you can take back to the bank and try to figure out, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, and we are, it, it's really just that strip of, of crushed stone, we are still providing.
Yep, no, I understand that. Any other questions on the parking? Mr. Long?
Yeah, I'll be very honest with you.
Yep.
When I look at this map, I see spaces all over here, all over here. You and I, Rich, we've been up in this place for how many years?
Too long.
This place, to be told that this won't go through because of the lack of eight spaces is kind of challenging credibility here.
So Bob, if I may.
Let me finish, please. You have all these spaces, and they've had trailer trucks, you know, parked here overnight. They didn't care about that at the time. But we approved the plan, the parking was fine at that time, I am not sure of the idea of why this eight, by the way, this is eight spaces now, two weeks ago it was 10 spaces.
There's still 10.
Yeah, we relocated two.
There's two more spaces up against, up against the bank side.
Or down here?
Yeah, on the drive-through side.
Okay, again, backing out into the lane.
This is a little bit better than, than backing out into that thoroughfare. I don't think it's, I don't think it's the answer, but it is a little bit better. Like you say, you and I are backing out into, into pedestrians that are behind the cars. So there's always something that's going to deter, deter the decisions that we make. But that's why I'd asked him if he could show it, I don't know if these walkways can be raised walkways.
Oh, they will be, yep.
For a speed bump?
Uh, you're saying the crosswalks?
The crosswalks.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly explore that.
Especially at the entrance coming in, just to slow the traffic down a little bit?
Sure.
And that, that, what's that big red hatch area?
That's a, that's a crosswalk.
That is a crosswalk?
Yep.
Okay. So you have two crosswalks, and the one in the middle, the black one, is that existing?
That's the sort of as-approved crosswalk?
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, we're, we're essentially taking that and relocating it just further down the drive-through.
So that will, that will leave then?
I'm sorry?
That won't be there?
It won't, we're just, we're pushing it sort of beyond.
That's why I asked for a drawing that's going to detail exactly what it's going to be.
Yep, absolutely, and we'd be happy to provide that.
So we do have some other issues, I don't know if you want to bring them up?
Yes, and I don't know if Randy passed everything on in the last meeting, but two things that were discussed, one that he said he was going to pass on to the bank was, there isn't a plan, approved plan, so, you know, and again, with spring coming up, you know, if you move forward on the building with, with this unresolved, because we do support the project, this part and change I'm not sure about. But the other was with Beta's review, they, they seem to think that this site is over one acre. And particularly when you look at this, this trench where if you have a five-foot excavation, you know, the sideslopes of that are gonna, you know, unless you're sheeting off that area, you, you have to have a sloped excavation.
Yeah, so.
And sort of it over and.
Sure. So I know this is something we've, we've discussed a handful of times, but I did, so this is a, this is an exhibit that you've seen before, it shades the area up to all of the, of all of the surrounding saw cut lines, and we're measuring a, a disturbance of 0.97 acres. Again, we, we weren't trying to.
Well, that's, that's the whole thing though, that thin strip.
Yeah, so I was going to also mention.
It's going to be wider.
So even if that's the case, there's no scenario from a construction phasing standpoint where this will be open and, you know, quote unquote disturbed while this is, so these, these will be, even though this exhibit does include that and it's still under the acre, this area will be phased in a way that this trench is done, pavement's put back down, and then the rest of the project, however that's phased, will take place. So there won't be a scenario here where there's an acre or above that's, that's disturbed at, at one time, so, so you won't have an open disturbed area of over an acre at any given point in time.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it's at any one time, but this is our peer consultant that, you know, would, he can convince me, but we, we would have to convince them too.
Okay.
Of his interpretation, and that was in their review of this, which I think took three weeks, so now we have a new design, if it was going to go.
And that's not the only trench that he's showing there either, that was the other thing, the water trench.
Oh, right, there'd be.
The sewer trench. Yeah. Sort of water that come in. Sort of water that come in.
I don't know how far off to the left it is, but.
I don't know how far any of it's in, it's not.
The sewer, the sewer is right here. So the sewer, there's no individual separate trenching for the sewer. It's within the limits of the regrading. So the sewer won't have its own individual trench, it'll just be part of the overall kind of project area.
So you can tie in at that?
Yeah, it was approved by DPW.
Do you have that in writing?
Yes.
Or you need that provided, because, you know.
Yeah, no, I haven't seen that. Because you know, we.
Yeah, I mean.
At that time, we were between engineers, so. And I did speak with Mr. Durkin, and he doesn't have recall getting that.
Yeah, I'll get it.
This is just stuff that, to keep this going forward that.
I know, I think from our perspective, it's, you know, this is our third time being in front of you regarding these proposed parking changes.
How many times were you in front of the board with the initial?
I believe it was five or six.
It's going around the drive. Is that the definite tie-in spot for the water?
Yep, yeah, and this was, again, this was all worked through with Larry, we have, you know.
What is the depth of that trench?
We don't have a depth of the existing water, so it's hard to say. But what we would do is, you know, keep it at whatever the minimum required is, you know, four and a half feet is what's typical, but we would confirm that with the water department. And then if this is deeper, then maybe we anticipate, they would sort of bend it down at that point. So we don't anticipate this run being any, you know, sort of extreme depth from a trenching perspective.
The other thing that came up with Beta is, why didn't we make you change the whole the whole concrete drainage pipe that's in front of the?
Yep.
I don't know if you've seen it there.
Yeah, so Randy told me, I did see the letter, and Randy told me that, it sounds like that came up at the last meeting. And I think from what I understand, we were in agreement that, you know, what we are showing right now is adequate. I don't know if you've got a change of.
No, no, like I said to you in that meeting, this is what we need to do. And once you start to open it, you can be told different from the engineer. I mean, you, that was viewed from the inside?
Yep.
But only for that short section of it? We didn't see what the rest of it looked like?
No, so we did, we CCTV from this catch basin all the way up to this one, so we do have that entire segment.
Would you like a copy of that, Ken?
I believe I sent that to you in the past.
You know, not only would I like a copy, I'd like to know that it's been reviewed by everybody and approved. You know, because.
There was several conditions on the approval meeting.
Yeah, that being one of the conditions.
And that was, that was, the concrete drainage pipe was one of the conditions at the time. Only because if it comes across the front and it does collapse, the rest of this is all sloped to Route 1. And, you know, but you, but I don't want to be the guy that says I approved it and it floods out Route 1, so.
Nick, there was another plan, it was the landscape plan that noted in the top right that a few waivers were being requested. You know, is the board aware of those waiver requests?
Yep, yeah, those were on the approved plans, and I did look into those, and none of the waivers are, we don't need to request any additional waivers, and those waivers aren't affected, so.
So this falls under the highway substantial, sustainable?
From the zone.
Zone extended?
Yes, business highways.
So you do understand there's no such thing as a waiver in that zone?
Okay.
There is no waivers in the substantial highway district.
Okay.
Either you have it or you don't. And I didn't see that in the original, shame on me, but as I, we've gone through with all the changes, that has popped up. So we're going to have to take a look at those and see what we can do.
Got it.
Is there anything else, board members?
No.
So you're going to provide us a correct drawing on the parking? You're gonna do a change of the landscaping? I had asked Kevin if we could get the elevation, the inverts on the solar manhole?
Yep, that's all on the approved plans.
It is, okay, I think you did say it was. My question to all that was, all that excavation, have we ever done any test borings?
Yes, there's borings, yes.
For down the main road, where the water's going to go?
No, no.
So how do we know that's contaminated or not? This site is, you did them here at this forward.
Sure, well, yeah, I mean, it's not contaminated above the thresholds that require, you know, remediation, but.
Well, what's the vapor?
But we still have to know where that material is going. You're putting it back in the hole on top of the water pipe?
Yep, yeah, and we talked about this during the initial permitting process, and if anything's encountered above, you know, we use responsible general contractors, and then they'll, if anything's encountered above the required threshold, we'll make sure that an elevator is in place.
So at the time of the first approval, we asked you who the contractor was, you didn't know. Do they know who the contractor is?
They do. It's Amcon, I believe, let me confirm that.
Amcon from Saugus?
No, they're from New Hampshire. Let me, I can confirm, I believe the bidding process is done at this point, so I, let me confirm.
Because you had said you got to refer to the contractor doing the site work.
Yes, yep.
Just a question for the board. You know, we've requested these updates. Is that necessary? I mean, does that mean the board's still open to these changes, or?
No, I want to see all the changes before we make a decision. The first approval has been put on hold by the building inspector, looking for the changes, some of them to which he listed and I showed you. So we would need all that to resubmit, to make this go forward. When the new changes come back, the board will then take a vote, whether it's minor or major, and that'd be up to the board, and then we could, at that point, tell them which way to go.
And I think we'll have to look at whether it's 25 or 35% for the landscaping.
I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's 35.
You know, because to me, that, I'd almost see that as a, you know, preliminary task before moving on, you know, make sure.
Well, he's also going to take out what's not, can't be waived.
Yeah, do you have the landscape plan, just so we could go read those items that the waivers requested?
Yeah, so I have, I don't have a copy, I have one that is within the board set, if that's.
I just wonder if they make these revisions, but, you know, for their own benefit, it'd be a waste of time if we end up having the installments approved.
So the first waiver that was requested states planting islands shall be a minimum of 10 feet by 20 feet in area. Least one shade tree plus low grating shrubs and/or ground cover to cover the entire area at maturity. So, I mean, I think the reason, the reason a waiver like that was requested is, you know, all the, there's, it's, in my opinion, it's sort of a vague requirement, you know, just mentioning that all planting islands shall be a minimum of 10 by 20. Like, I guess I'd be curious to know what is defined as a landscape island, just. But the reason we requested the waivers is because we have some, you know, landscape islands here that are under the 10 feet. And again, those won't be changed. And I think from our perspective too, that is sort of an existing non-conformity that kind of exists throughout this shopping center. Understanding that's outside of, you know, the limit of work that this project deals with. The next waiver being, at least half of the planting strips shall be a minimum of 15 feet in width and contain a five-foot paved walkway leading towards the building with five feet provided for plantings on both sides of the walkway. So again, that's sort of like, in my opinion, that doesn't necessarily apply to this project.
This is why I said we need a new landscape plan. How we're going to make up what you had on that one versus what we're going to get with this one. And then that's what brought me into looking at waivers, it brought Reonar into looking at waivers, and then Kevin brought it to my attention the other day, so.
Yeah, understood, and again, I, it's our understanding that the proposed layout changes don't, you know, impact or require any additional waivers that weren't previously requested and approved.
And how were they approved?
I mean, they were, I mean, they're on the approved plans. Yes, that's.
Interesting, I mean, it's, somebody, somebody made these rules for the town to follow and requesting a waiver to the board too is.
It's different than putting them on a plate.
It is different, but it's also asking the board to predict a standard that's been established by someone at some time.
Sure.
They weren't at any meeting directly called out as a waiver?
Understood. Yeah, and I would just ask, like, I just, again, in my opinion, and, you know, we have landscape architects that put these plans together that, you know, are very well-versed in these kinds of development. Like, again, the one that I just read, contain five-foot paved walkway leading towards the building with five feet provided for planting on both sides of the walkway. I guess so, five feet sidewalk, five feet landscaping, five feet landscaping, that. It doesn't seem like the intent of that requirement is really for a development like this.
It doesn't look like it's going to fit to begin with.
Exactly. I'd be curious if, you know, all the other developments that have been approved up and down Route 1, you know, meet those or that specific requirement. I know our office done a handful, and I, I think I can confidently say they don't.
A handful on Route 1? You've done a handful?
Well, as the stormwater, like the MS4 requirements change, they do want more pervious surface, so it could be a newer standard. I don't know how often these.
We give that up to the engineers.
Yeah, and we're, so we're meeting all of the local and state stormwater standards, as are today. Do understand that there's some changes coming to the state stormwater standards in, you know, not sure if it will even be this year. I'm not positive if this layout meets those standards, I believe it does those standards. I've seen sort of the draft version of them, and it has more to do with, you know, total suspended solids removal and kind of new development parcels that, you know, this one really isn't. Again, we're, we're taking a piece of this parking area that is almost entirely impervious and just pavement today, and we're adding, you know, an additional 4,000 square feet of pervious surfaces. So it actually, you know, is sort of above and beyond what the stormwater standards would require in the sense that it results in a pretty significant decrease in water quality, volume, recharge, peak rates of runoff and volume. And I know Beta agreed with that approach when we were going through the peer review process.
So 4,000 square feet was the approved plans or the current?
That's, so the current that we're providing right now is actually, so it's 3,385, is with this alternate layout.
And what was it before?
Before, it was 6,640.
So 50%.
And again, in the existing condition, it was 935. So, you know, the proposed, even with these proposed parking changes, it results in a 262% increase of pervious surfaces, landscape surfaces, within, you know, this area of the parcel.
That's good for a nice gravel lot, when you're on top of ledge that changes.
I'm sorry?
That's good for a nice gravel lot, for the runoff, but you're on top of all ledge there.
Sure, I mean, yeah. Yeah, and we did explore, you know, subsurface drainage system back with Larry and Beta, and with the ledge, it really wasn't feasible here, which is how kind of our stormwater approach evolved into what it is.
Any more questions?
I just stand, I'm in support of the design for the landscape. You know, we're told that the owner would bail out if they can't have these 10 spaces.
That's correct.
We've also learned that they've selected a contractor.
Yeah, sure, so it's, if I may, it's two different entities, right? So Chase is the one, Chase is the developer for kind of, I guess, what our discussion is about. So Chase is the one that hires the general contractor. We work for an OPM who represents Chase, and ultimately Chase coordinates these approvals through the landlord, given that they're the property owner. So what, exactly like you just said, what we've been told is that the landlord will not sign off on Chase moving forward with a building permit application unless they can get these 10 additional parking spaces. And again, really, the reason for that, and I just want to be clear about this, is in the lease language for these other tenants that we're not necessarily privy to, that's sort of between the landlord, the property owner, and their tenants. There's specific parking counts that need to be obtained. And with the approved layout, it just does not meet those parking requirements, and the tenants would not be able to sign off on the Chase project moving forward, which will, you know, in turn not allow the landlord to allow Chase to move forward. I know it might sound, you know, trivial and kind of silly proposing, you know, the project really hinging on 10 additional parking spaces on a 16 and a half acre shopping center, but that, unfortunately, that's just the reality of how these leases are written, and that's sort of where we are, so we're really just trying to.
So who would actually use those spaces, being so far away from Stop and Shop Florida to Cor? Who would use them?
I mean, they're not specifically designated.
So over here in the corner, where you show your directional arrow, where the north is?
Yep.
You don't have any spaces drawn in there, and those are all spaces?
I'm sorry, I guess.
Right here, along the ledge, these here are all spaces. Correct?
Do we have anything, Mr. Chairman, from the owner?
We do have a letter from the owner's representative, which is Grossman.
Correct.
And we have a letter from Mr. Saugus, I believe it is.
So do we have a letter that specifically states?
That he needs the spaces.
This project will not go through.
Doesn't say that, but it does say that they are required to have the spaces.
Been around a long time.
Yeah, no.
Heard more damn stories.
I'm just saying, if he's missing 10 spaces over there, there's your 10.
Yeah, so John, just quickly.
But to think that something like this would not go through after previously having been approved by us for the sake of these spaces up here.
No, I hear what you're saying, right.
You're asking, oh. You're putting it in a place I really don't want to go.
What we need to do is have him produce what he's putting forward tonight in a plan, and then we could discuss whether it's a minor change, a major change, and then go from there. This is just an informational hearing?
It's a single-story building.
Single-story building.
God help us if this was a two or three-story building.
You would do it.
Which is permitted.
Yep.
And if you look at the information up here and the number of spaces, there are more than enough spaces.
The bank does.
Yeah, so the overall parcel is overpart from a zoning standpoint. And again, Bob, I understand where you're coming from, I really do. It really, it just comes down to how these leases with the other tenants are written.
Let me make it be very specific. I, you're being asked to do something, and that's fine. And we're being asked to do something, and that's all. something, and that's all, so, we each have an opinion as to what is proper here.
Sure, absolutely.
So, first, I'm just one vote on the board.
Yep, absolutely, and all we're trying to do, like, I mean, at the end of the day, we, we've had a positive experience with the town of Saugus to this point, I know Chase really wants to be here, we're just really trying to work with, with the town to get these ten additional spaces, understanding that, you know, from the board's perspective, it can be frustrating when, you know, you approve a plan and then we come back in a few months later with, with the changes. Unfortunately, that's just how the process went here, again, I apologize for that confusion. I just think, you know, from this point, we, we just, we really want to work with the town, work with Kevin, work with Brianna, to get these ten additional spaces to, to move this project forward, because, I mean, I, I think it's a great project, it, it generates additional tax revenue for the town, and, I mean, I, I just think it, I, I think it's kind of...
It also creates revenue for the, for the owner of the land.
I'm sorry?
It also creates revenue for the people who own the land.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's the nature of, of the development business.
Sometimes you can't have what you want.
Yep, absolutely, I guess I'm just...
We just need you to produce it so that we can, we can determine whether it's a major or minor, to, to continue or whatever, make them out of it, and if you do that drawing, get it back into us, we'll have another meeting, and then we can decide, we can see it clearer, and we'll put it to a vote with the board.
I think, Mr. Chairman, it'd also be nice to have quantified what is being lost in terms of the landscape area, and you had mentioned the drought resistant, did the approved design have irrigation, and that's getting removed, too?
No, we, there was not an irrigation design prepared in, in part the approval.
I just, I see it more as a loss, I mean, Bob has a great point about, even this Google map, there's nothing but empty spaces, and...
I've never, never seen, and I can say this honestly, I, I only live on the other side of the bridge, these spaces along Main Street, I've never seen a car parked there.
I, I, again, I am...
I, I know where you're coming, everyone wants to be up front, but this is what you need to, to reproduce and get to the board.
Sure.
And then, there's two other members, in fairness to them, that aren't here tonight, and they were part of the original vote, I'd like them to be here to be part of what goes forward, take a look at it, get a better concept on the overlay, see what it is.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we come to a, again, this is just my thought, not the board's, we come to a happy meeting, we give him five spaces, and he eats five spaces.
Sure.
So, just, I'm not sure that's even the solution, but I'm just saying, to cut out all that landscaping from where we first started, if you remember the first meeting, they wanted you to turn the bank to face Route One, get rid of the garbage truck pickup in the back, you've done all that, except, except, we've worked very hard to get it to a point of approval, and now that it's in approval, we're, we're going through major changes.
Sure, so I, I guess what I would just ask out of you guys, because, you know...
I'll make a motion to continue the discussion. When we're ready.
Well, once we have a drawing, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, if we're ready, I'll make a motion.
But I'll let, let him finish what he has to say, and then...
I, I guess I would just ask, and I know we've, we've heard some feedback, but I think it would help us provide, you know, some sort of level of comfort if we could just sort of understand, you know, like, the board's feelings or initial, initial feelings on these ten additional spaces, and, and the reason I ask that is because, you know, this is, I believe, our, our third or fourth meeting discussing this, and there's been, you know, Chase has spent a, a real, you know, a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of money on, on sort of us looking into these additional spaces, and I just want, you know, I, I'm, I'm really hoping to be able to...
In fairness to the board on that statement, you guys get paid, we don't, we've been right here with you, so, it's just a lot of time for us, too.
Sure.
And we try to, we try to present to you from day one what the board was looking for, and I think my words at that time, if you provide to us what, what we're looking for, your job become easy.
Yep.
But we've had, we've had some rebuttal along the way, which is fine, but that's been the delay, so...
Okay, and, and I guess I just would ask, you know, is this layout in the realm of what you're looking for, knowing that, you know...
I say it's fifty percent better than what we had, from backing out onto that thorough field, so that, as far as safety, I, I think it's better. As far as losing all the landscape to accomplish that, it's, it's a block building sitting in the middle of the parking lot, the way I look at it, there's nothing appealing about it whatsoever.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we continue the discussion, pending additional information, and the, and also from our engineers to how satisfied he is with what we're currently at and should have, and that the next meeting, make the decision whether or not there should be a, a major revamping of the original plan, and have another public hearing on it, or whether it's a minor, it's a minor situation. So I'd make the motion to continue the discussion, the next meeting that we have, what, in two weeks?
It's the twentieth, I believe. Take a second?
I'll second that, excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just, sorry, real quick, I, I just wanna be real clear as far as what we need to get different parties prior to the next...
So, I'm, if Kevin doesn't mind, I know how busy he is, but he's probably the easiest guy to get in touch with, I think you have a good feeling what we're looking for, you could spend ten, fifteen minutes on the phone with Nick, I know there's some stuff that Larry had asked about that we haven't seen yet, so going, he's gone through Larry's files...
Sure.
And there's stuff that we haven't seen yet and that, so that's why I'm saying, there's probably more on that end than it is on, on the parking, no waivers allowed, add up everything that we said tonight, and try to work that into a plan based off the original approval plan, that I think would be a better, better off.
Okay.
Next on the, next on the agenda, we have another informal discussion on an Asbeld plan, a temporary CO for seven ninety-nine, Raising Canes. Mr. Richard Magna, Tony Magna, will be representing as a client.
Mr. Chairman, as a board for the record, Attorney Richard Magna, with office at one ninety-four Central Street here in Saugus, representing Raising Canes, with me this evening, Sarah Holmes, Regional Property Manager for Raising Canes, and also Eric DeGruel from Boulder Engineering filling in for Matt Ashley, who's been a, he's been working up to this point, he can be here to see what's going in. The, the project is moving along, moving before the selectmen Tuesday night for a Google Color Victorious License, Entertainment License, such as they were, and at this point, I think I'll throw this out regarding moving forward from the board, I know there were some late-minute filings from Asbeld's, which we only got the other day, to the board, but that's part of the point of this conversation.
We were supposed to receive some this evening, it still happened.
I beg your pardon.
We were supposed to receive some full, full sets of plans this evening?
Yeah, I have them with me, I assumed you wouldn't have had them...
They would help.
I can certainly pass those over, perhaps we give an update at the appropriate time or...
You're welcome.
Cool, too.
Um, I appreciate your time, and I've been staying here because we're really close to getting to the point of being able to open Raising Canes, I don't know if you guys have had the chance to drive by the site, but the building is complete, and we were issued a TCO, the stock and crane, and we do have a landscape bond in place for the landscaping, because obviously with the weather, we're not quite yet able to install that, so we've been working with Michael Vecchia and Kevin to get the final pieces together, but we're here because we would like just to review the Asbelds, and I'll let Eric go through those, but just as you see on the Asbelds, we do have it redlined for you all, and you can see the difference between what was approved and what was built, and Eric's made a great short narrative there of just the few minor things that were changed, but we've built a great site for you all, and we can't wait to open it up and have everyone in Saugus out to have some great chicken fingers. So, Eric?
Again, just from, we do apologize for the, the last minute on, on the submission, Raising Canes have been working very hard, the contractor's been working very hard to move things along, just the timing of this meeting, and when, when they were able to do the final paving and striping, the surveyor turned around the plan and essentially were able to submit just as we had it, so do appreciate that you've just seen this for the first moment here, the, the few things that we gave you is the, the engineer's certification letter, I can walk through the plan, but effectively, the Asbeld is in conformance from our perspective, and that's what this letter indicates, you know, they did a remarkable job, really, with the, with the construction in terms of building related to plan. At the time of the survey, they were finishing striping, so the actual Asbeld had just some stri, a little bit of striping missing, we indicated what those were on this letter. We did go to the field after and digitally inspected and found that those are now installed, and those were just the do-not-flop-the-box pile, which obviously was part of the special permit requirement, but that has been installed. There was also some of the, the gas straps or the, in the catch basin were installed at that time, they now are, those typically always lag behind, but we, we have those and photographs of those as well, so some very minor items, but now at this point, we believe the, the site to be fully in conformance with the approved plan, again, as are the special permit conditions, we were required to submit this, also required to submit truck training plan, this condition number twenty-five, we ran fire truck, as we had done on that approved site plan, it runs just the same, obviously the, the current lines, everything was built per plan, so there's no issues there and that.
The entrance plan is built, there was a change to the entrance that we were vaguely told about the last time, so...
Yeah, so the, that came before the, the board...
It came before us, but it was never discussed due to the time limit, it turns, it got late that night.
It was never discussed at the time.
Well, I, I recall, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the discussion was that this was a reduction in the size of this island, I brought this from a prior meeting. It was not understood by me, and I don't think the board, that this was replacing the current structure with line striping, which is what's out there now.
That's correct, I mean, it does match the plan that it provides to see the striping, the red line is the, and that showing striping is what was submitted and approved, if that means my understanding.
Right, but it, it was, when asked for clarification, it was not said it was a removal of the curb, it said it was a reduction in size. We also observed that this whole piece of granite curb was not installed.
Right.
Now, I've let Matt know that the DOT permit references a February twenty-eighth set of plans, that they approved, you know, the, the access to Route One on. My, my concern is that they would need to approve, whether, whether the board understood that this was the change is another issue, but per DOT, their approval permit should match at least the Asbelds.
Correct. Yeah, so, if I might just, a couple of those items, mention this curve line wasn't built, but that's exactly what we showed on this, this red line plan, that wasn't allowed to be built because it was on the buyer's property, and they presented that as part of what we explained during the meeting, that's why it wasn't built out, and that's exactly what is shown on that plan.
Well, there was a meeting, I forget, I don't think you would hear it.
That certainly wasn't, okay.
There was never a point to the board, I picked up when they're doing a drive-by a day or so ago, and I asked Kevin to go by today, and missing the granite curb, that was...
And that's on the...
But that's a change, so it should have came to the board.
It did come to the board, that's, this is what was submitted to the board, that's what's shown, it's not on the plan, so respectfully, it was submitted and approved.
Submitted and discussed the two different things.
Approved, you know, I think.
No, I don't think it was approved.
I don't know who got this far, to be honest.
You could pass that over to John, I mean, is it clear that that was going to get deleted there, but what, whether we...
My understanding of that, to be truthfully honest, was, was gonna be made a little bit narrower to help with the swing to come in, and when I went up there and saw painted strip in the ground, it's not what, this is not an island, the painted strip to me is not an island.
No new island on that side.
I, I see a huge, huge safety problem there, to be truthfully honest with you.
But even taking our opinion out of it, it would still have to go before DOT, right?
You are correct.
DOT is on the side.
They actually were on site on Tuesday, and they had their problems with it.
So it was closely coordinated with DOT, there's no changes to the right-of-way in anything in their state layout, so they were...
So you should have no problem getting us a letter, then?
I think we'll get a, indicating that, so we can submit...
Yeah, an updated permit.
I don't think we'll get an updated permit.
Well, it's referencing...
I think we'll get a sign-off on what was built. I don't think they're gonna...
If it acknowledges that it supersedes that...
Permit, I, I, and I, I defer, I don't know the full scope of their...
Their, their own world with DOT, documentation, what's required on a street may not be required here.
But I think we can get resolution from DOT that they find, that would be acceptable, and that would be, okay. Okay. I mean, relative to the granite curbing on, on the abutting property, we don't have control over that, that's part of why we came back to the board, so we physically can't do the work on the abutting property, and...
Well, they came back when the forest main sewer was being submitted, and then this change was kind of rolled into that, so it was actually one vote, which we were under the impression it was more for the sewer, which, in, in my closeout, I've been working with Matt and requesting some items, and I know you guys wanna be complete, going back to the, the planning board approval, you know, it references these other materials that were submitted, you know, so what I, what I need to work on with Matt is to make sure that all these conditions were met, and the big one being the sewer inspection approval, it's come to my attention that was maybe never approved or never brought back to the board, so I've asked for that documentation as well.
Do you have a copy of the letter from the past engineer, saying that he would never happen when he would see himself? They kind of got...
And you may have heard of the issue that happened the other day.
Yeah, I'd love to speak to all the things you just brought up, so I think the first one is the materials that you're referencing, those are, those are what was submitted to the board, and some of these things you're suggesting are just our, our site plans, all of those items are submitted materials, peer review comment letters, you know...
But if there's, if there's conditions in these documents, they need to be met, you know?
There won't be conditions, those are just the materials that we filed inside the decision itself, it requires, there are, there are specific conditions that we need to meet, before construction, before issuance of building permits, before certificate of occupancy, all of those items are in the decision itself, and specifically, some of those items were pulled out of that submitted material, the Tetra Tech, two comments from Tetra Tech peer review, and put in, in the decision, so I don't, I'm confused why we would have to go back through all the peer review comments, because we're...
Well, 'cause some of them reference the, the completion of the job, at completion of the job, do this, or prior to doing this, do that.
No, they're put into the decision conditions, so I'd love to focus on the conditions, because there's a lot of, there's eighteen months of back and forth with the planning board, Larry, different departments, and that's gonna be, we've already done that, and that's how the decision was issued, and some of those items were pulled out and put in the decision, item twenty-two and twenty-six, the Tetra Tech letter, that's in the decision, so we can prove to you that we've done those things, but I respectfully, there's just a lot of material, we'd be going back through all the meetings and every communication that ever happened.
It's understood, but in fairness to you, this is the first time we're seeing this.
Oh, I understand that.
So we're...
I totally understand the Asbelds.
Tetra Tech doesn't even have this to, to, to go through, they haven't provided us with a punch list of any items that may or may not have been done, so this is, this is why we require this, this exact plan to be... So this is, this is why we require this exact plan to be.
They're in a peer review. Respectfully, we weren't given a checklist. We asked numerous times for a checklist.
From whom?
From the town to get all these documents prepared so that we could provide a full.
So whom did you ask in the town?
Eric Dino, who specifically Matt was reaching out to.
I mean, we started in the building department, I think, then had continued some of those communications with Kevin.
As well, I spoke to Mike today. He says that he wasn't ready to issue a temporary occupancy permit.
He's already issued a TCO. We're already have it.
You have a temporary occupancy permit before we've had that?
We have a TCO to stop and train.
To train?
Yes.
But not to occupy the public, not to occupy the building?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Yeah, he told me that he did give his go ahead for your training purposes.
So we discussed when the sewer was approved that we were going to get something in writing that the owner would be responsible for any grease backup all the way down to the main on Forest Street. I did see that Matt provided the easement agreement, but the easement agreement basically says beyond that manhole in the back of the property is the limit of Raising Canes responsibility. And it was that yes that got the board to vote yes. So that's an outstanding item.
I believe there was a document submitted from the Nicolays, a covenant to the town, to the board, that they would take full responsibility for any work that had to be done in that sewer. And it was submitted to you. I have to talk to her again.
I think you may not have seen that.
And you needed it.
Did you introduce that to us this evening?
Is this the easement agreement from April? No. Okay, then I haven't seen that.
Obviously.
But it's still, I don't think, Tony Megan, that it references to what they're responsible for?
They said the whole line is.
For the Nicolays to take it from the first manhole? If it's just legal interpretation. So I was going to ask if we could have the time to ask this on to Jesse.
Sure.
Town council.
Town council, John, and see what, see what he thinks of it. We had, I can let Kevin explain to it, but we had an issue up there on Tuesday prior to startup. And everything that I told Matt came true before you even started pumping grease.
We had to pump that in grease.
No, that's correct, but we had a huge backup, not from you guys, maybe from someone else. But this is what I am saying as far as a maintenance program goes. And why it needs to be documented and held to a true testimony. I'm hearing stories through town that they're going to jump from place to place, one month then, one month. You guys, we can't, we could take a lot of business, what's going to happen. We can't have that. We have to have a maintenance program, which I believe we do have something of one.
But we do, they have provided a O and M plan for when they're under construction and, you know, if, I guess if there's an agreement that Nicolay would own it, it's contradictory to the discussion that was held at a prior meeting, so I don't know what we do about that. But the issue, and when I say I don't think the sewer hookup was approved, there was so much grease in that line. And I was questioning the completeness of that investigation, which I believe was discussed by the board. And we got a letter, I think from you, saying, requesting the town to service the sewer that we're now saying is private. It was so backed up that action had to be taken and, you know.
But any contract that has a drainage license should have seen this before any test was run. So that's where I have my problem.
Well, there was no test run. They saw that it was backing up. They said before we turn the water on in two days, we need to make sure it's clean, otherwise we're going to get blamed for it. So that's when I.
Well, I was under the impression from Tetra Tech that they ran, and Tucker Parity was there when you guys were going to test the line. And he's our engineer on site.
Yeah, but their line, their line was okay, right?
No, I understand that, but they ran the two-inch forest main into that manhole. They should have seen something and said something to someone.
We cleaned it before, before we saw a manhole full of water. They cleaned it, got it cleared out so that they could do that. And then that's when they said, hey, can we make sure perpetuity that this is not going to be a problem moving forward?
Did you modify the engineering department? Because.
I had been, well, what ended up, the clearing that was on the private property pushed the blockage down to town on property. And the backup was so bad, it was within a foot of overflowing that manhole, probably about.
But when we said when the testing was done, this was laid, what, what Raising Kane would be responsible for? We told them to the first manhole and as far as cleaning that due to the sludge from the grease. And Matt had no problem with that.
The first manhole, now we have, right.
So it'd be the first manhole, the town manhole.
On the main.
It does, right. It doesn't, it doesn't actually fall a Nicolay circle. It falls below that on Forest Street. Now, he specifically said Forest Street. And Matt told us no problem. And then I get a call from Kevin saying, we got a huge problem up here. And we also flooded out a gentleman across the street with raw surge and grease. Because as they kept trying to push it forward to clear it, they only moved it further down the line. So it created, the town to be up there with their, with their pressure washer, their back the truck by five, four, five hours. And then it just, it went into the next day and then it followed up someone's whole cellar with surge. All because we asked this to be scoped to that manhole, which it was never done.
Well, some of it was. I can't.
Just to the first man.
Tell the completeness, but even there, there was, there's a photo of grease that was, you know, in the system. And I can't see approval being given without a request to fully clean out the line. And it's too bad because this, you know.
I'm not saying it was your responsibility, but it should have been brought to the owner of whose easement it was. Saying, okay, what are we doing with this? Just as courteous to the town.
Potentially, I know we submitted that information to Larry at the time of the request, which was well before Kevin's time.
Yeah, I've asked Matt to just say, hey, send me that. Because if the approval, there should be some, yeah, we got the video. You guys are good.
Did you, did you read Larry's? I had sent it to you today.
Yeah, I don't remember word for word what he said, but, you know, that would have been one of these conditions on.
So he left before it was produced. So I don't know who would have received it.
Before it was produced.
Before that video of the soil was actually given to the engineering department. There is no record of it down at the DPW. And according to Larry here, he sent me everything that he had.
Oh, we can, whatever.
It came after he left, and I don't know who got it.
Potentially, but I think it was sent while he was there, because we've had multiple phone calls after that with him.
It's in his report. He doesn't be.
Well, we're here today. Apparently, however it worked out, was not effective because of this problem. And, you know, now we should avoid that going forward, you know. If, you know, unless you have a, I just feel as it was discussed and all this, all this grease being it down into the town system. You know, with the turnover on the board and in the engineering department and the planning board, it got biased and it's too bad and.
What would happen differently, I guess? The pipe clearly needs to be cleaned out. That's what happened. So regardless of when.
No, it didn't. It didn't get cleaned out prior to Raising Canes hooking to it.
Yeah, but the small additional flow from Raising Canes didn't cause any issue, but they're not.
Right, but the person you made the agreement with.
But he would have cleaned it the same way. He would have just kept, right? I don't, whoever went to.
Well, that's why we asked to go further down.
Continue cleaning further down.
To inspect it.
Right.
To the main.
I understand.
You can make a motion that we do that.
But I mean, at this point, it's fully clean. We cleaned half. We made, if we made poo or did it made a mess, you came in and cleaned the rest of the house.
Well, there's chimneys, there's vertical drops. Okay, so the problem was at the vertical drops on two of these, because it's up on a hill. So, you know, I don't know, aside from it allows water to flow again, if it's 50% clean or 80% clean, but.
We had a full video done of it, correct?
Yeah.
Afterwards.
There'd be nothing worse than going forward, opening up, and a week later having it closed down. That's what happened in Commonwealth afterward. On your other store?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of.
In Austin?
Yeah.
It was in the news up here.
The grease, the grease filled up the manhole. It's causing such a stink in your restaurant that.
Well, that was a different.
Well, it's grease, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not, I'm not saying, you just don't want to get into that at this point. We're just trying to head this all off ahead of time, so. But I can, I can send Matt, and I'll discuss this with Kevin, what was asked of and what he's claiming that he's never got, so. But he, I know this is, he's got a pretty good record of everything that went down. And he claims that he's never got it. You know, the town wanted the full length of the private sewer used by 799 to show it a planned profile, which we don't have anything. It stops 300 feet across the back of it. It doesn't go, it doesn't go all the way to the main store. This is what asked from the engineer at the time, and we never received it.
And that's where I think some of these requests are in these materials. And if these are no longer applicable, you know, I need clarification on that, but the thing is, we just, we don't want this issue to happen again. And it could be, could not, still not be in an ideal condition. You know, these, these pieces of grease were, you know, bit like three, four feet long. Because they've probably been there the whole time and, you know, from, you know, in part and wide.
When you talk to the people next to us, we didn't have a problem. So this is what I'm saying. We need an independent agreement. I can't put you on a staggering on it up because then if we have a problem, no, it's their fault, not our fault, so.
Respectfully, though, we're not open, so it's clear whose problem.
This is all, this is all before you opened. We're trying to give you a little heads up.
Oh, yeah.
Just like I gave Matt the heads up. Having been in the restaurant business for a long time, having this type of system are the aggravation it caused me.
Yeah.
So I kind of was well aware of what grease does over the winter time. And I just tried to give him a little heads up at the time. And he agreed to take it on down to Forest Street. But evidently, that never happened, so. And he's not here and it's not, not being said in a bad way. If he was here, I'd be telling him the same thing, so.
And could I ask, was that shared with Matt as far as what was needing to meet conditions?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, this week. So this, this would be on top of the conditions that Eric mentioned, kind of the checklist. And a couple of these items have numbered requirements, you know, maybe one to 20. So it is there. You know, it's just, you know, we missed this, so we just want to make sure we're not missing anything else. You know, for, I hadn't been involved too much with the drainage, looking at the ASBIL. It had shown some inverts that were out going into that wet land out back. I wasn't sure. I found those. But that could be another item about, that would be on that list, like maybe a completion verifying that the drainage system was installed properly or inspection, the closeout inspection, I'm not sure. I asked Matt, I said, why don't you send me what, because there was revisions to these along the way. Send me the latest you have in terms of the DPW conditions, the engineering conditions. Most of them, I'm sure, like drainage calculations, stormwater management plan. That's its own standalone document, so we have that, I'm sure. But just to verify, we have it and then we're following up with whatever that plan outlines.
So we need to re-submit all the permitted plans?
No, I think you could say submitted on this date or just say that it was submitted and.
I mean, it's something right there. We submitted. That's why it was reviewed. That's why we're getting, I think, yeah, okay, understood.
Listen, you didn't.
We did submit that. We'll get the emails to the board. We did.
You did it, but you didn't identify the problem, you know, so I'm.
I understand. I understand. I think what would be helpful.
So did you, did you ever look at this photo? From the inspection?
It's what's dated.
February. That was when you referenced in the letter.
This was not what I referenced in the letter.
You said there was a camera inspection in February of 2024 and March of 2025. And that's the one from 2024. There's a big block of grease, so.
I don't, this is what I reviewed. I have photos in the letter that I sent.
Okay.
There were at least three cameras blown at the beginning, after cleaning again to confirm. So I don't, I don't know if this was, confident this wasn't the same one, but.
Okay, so that's why I just want to vet out that timeline. You know, it's something I have to do as the town engineer and representing the DPW here on this matter and, you know, don't, don't take it the wrong way. I think, I think Dixon did a great job up there. You know, I think there was a lot of positives about the project too, but for our closeout, we need to, we need to get everything.
Dot our i's, cross our t's, as they say.
So would you be open? I'm sure, I think you've mentioned you would be if Matt came down early next week, we'll bring absolutely material.
My understanding was you've tried Matt all week long and he's.
They talked together today, didn't they?
Did you talk to Matt today?
Reached out early.
No, he tried calling me. He was kind of non-responsive last week when this was happening.
Got some emails, back and forth, but the thing that we thought we needed to do again, which are the conditions of approval and outstanding Tetra Tech items they have.
We don't want to hold you up, trust us.
Right.
We just want, we just want to make it right before we jump in with both feet.
Could I potentially offer a happy medium that we will gladly work with Kevin to resolve everything and this board give us some.
You know, I would, I would, I would take that into consideration. But as I say, what I've got from Larry and what he asked for and never got, kind of sows me a little bit. Because we would have headed this off long before you started, because it's one of the first things that he asked, was that line be camered and sent to him? And he even offered to go up there the day it was being done to inspect it. And I believe he did do that to a point, but only to the first catch basin, which was eliminated. That's where I asked for a sweep to be put in for this particular reason. If they had a 45 in line on the design, I says, could you put a sweep on there? Because you won't get a pressure jet down through that on a 45. It won't make the bend, so that's, then they said they, according to Matt, they were going to close up that first catch basin. So that, that's as far as it ever went, 150 feet from your property.
If, I just want to make sure I understand. Is it, that sweep you're talking about is happening here, right?
Right there. Right there.
There used to be a manhole here, which we-
That's correct.
Removed.
He would've looked at the one they tied into-
All the cameraing was happening where we tied in, and then up, way upstream.
He said he got one from the property outback-
Yep, which is-
On the eight-inch line?
Yeah, right, yeah, so it is.
Outback of your store. The one you didn't tie into, where you went for the change to the four-inch main? They said they couldn't use that line? There was a blockage? And that's the one that was scoped on the back of the building. If you look at the original plan-
The roadhouse or the existing building that came down?
The existing-
Right.
Main.
Yeah, we abandoned that one.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's the one that was scoped, according to Larry. Nothing, but it only went to the first catch basin.
We scoped, we scoped from this manhole up, and we scoped from the subdivision down. But probably what didn't happen is the big drop, it probably disconnected at that point.
Probably never went true.
Very likely the issue there.
So, it didn't give us a direction of the tape. I understood it to be from the, when I asked Matt at that last meeting, why are we abandoning the eight-inch line if there was no problems with the video? No, the six-inch line, whatever was at the back of the building.
We couldn't go by gravity, because that's why we went by the four-stain.
You couldn't go by gravity?
Correct, we were going by the four-stain proposal.
Because the pipe was laid inappropriately, or, but it worked for three stores before you? I don't know if any of them were restaurants, but-
That connection was, we don't know where that existing junction was. We don't, it didn't go to that manhole, I don't know where.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying. It was supposed to go to the first manhole. So, they took it from inside, scoped the line down. And the way it was explained to me is that first manhole that was abandoned is as far as they got.
Right, which was somewhere closer to the property. That's why we didn't feel at all comfortable reconnecting.
So, we were told there was an electrical duct that was blocking it from being used.
Right, where we were trying to go with the proposal. That's why we couldn't get there by gravity, and that's why we went-
So, I don't think, with what you just agreed with me with, that the line that you're now tied into was ever scoped. Or at least not at the point when Larry was here.
It was, I'm certain, I'm certain of it.
The board doesn't, you haven't found any, any drives for that, correct? Within your office?
Well, I believe this, this plan calls out that numbered manhole outback.
As manhole two.
But the problem was all the way down beyond, beyond the limit of this. And it doesn't fully capture the vertical.
Okay.
So, I, it's just a good example of it wasn't 100% understood by everybody about what was going on, condition, location.
Well, let's put it this way, Kev. Not agreeing with you, but when I say to scope it till it hits the main line, which was the street where the town owns the first manhole, that never happened.
Right. I still, I honestly still-
Maybe, maybe it happened afterwards, without our knowledge.
That's all I'll say.
Do you have a drive for that? Or you can get, get a drive so they can store it?
Absolutely, we'll get you the video. We will, I think we've resent it honestly already. I don't know-
They need to know-
The timing of when Larry was here, I'm almost positive we sent it to him and you're still here, because there's follow-up conversations after. But our understanding of the comment was, scope the line, provide the video. We scoped the line, we provided the video.
To the first manhole?
But I think all the way up to the subdivision line. I think, but we came both ways out, because we probably hit the drop and then didn't know what was going on, most likely, to be honest and fair. But I think we cameraed from both sides, and then it got stuck in the drop. But we, we sent the video, and that's our understanding of what our obligation was. Scope the line, provide it.
Well, it was to scope it so we could confirm that it was acceptable.
Correct, that didn't happen, that's why we-
And there was an assumption I made of it would've been done early on, because why would you have a construction project if you didn't vet out that you could hook into this utility?
Not to beat a dead horse, but as of 11:23, Larry went through, I have his records. John, this was in earlier, before I developed my checklist. It looks like I didn't require a saw video, but it was required from the board. That's what he sent me, it's right there, black and white.
Oh, we knew it was required, and we, I'm saying, we did it and we provided-
We never got an answer, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know, but I understand-
Maybe you did send it, in the lack of him not being here? We went without an engineer for how long?
A month and a half.
Five, six months?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it got lost, it got lost on the shuffle?
Understood.
And we just don't want to happen again what happened on Tuesday. It's not, it's good for no one.
Yeah, we're, I'm completely in agreeance. We don't want to open a restaurant that's going to shut down. What we're asking of this board, though, is to say that you would allow us to move forward if we meet the conditions that have already been agreed to and would work with Kevin.
Personally, I would like to see that video. I have, at least have the, give the engineer some time. And again, we're here on the-
He can happily do that. He can send it to you, have everything in your hand on Monday.
The problem with the video is it was six, eight months ago. It's no longer the current video anyhow. We'll get it to you to show that we met the obligation, but I don't know.
Mr. Lo?
We have two documents here, two legal documents.
Well, they have to go to council anyways.
Okay, I mean, I think-
I've asked-
That line could possibly, in the future, be a problem. We know that.
Yeah.
And you've got two users. So, it's already been blocked with one user, never mind two. So, these two documents here need to go to town council to make sure that the planning board, the town solars, rather, is really harmless in any type of sewage situations that develop.
I don't disagree. I think I mentioned that to Attorney Magnum. So, whether it goes to Jesse or if it goes to John, one of them, just to clear the board. It's, we're kind of like the Whitman post of the town, to be truthfully honest. We mess up, it's our heads. So, we don't want to bring you any problems. We don't want any problems. We're here for the protection of the town.
Absolutely.
And what's worse, he's a representative of that district.
Honestly, we don't want to cause any issues with the sewer main. We're wanting, really, the intent to, the letter to DPW was to notify them of the issue that we already solved prior to open, so we could work together to fix the, fix the concern. And, and that was addressed with the landlord. It was addressed, you know, to DPW. And so, it's more of how do we work together to-
Your council has got the Nicoli signature upon it. We've got a certified signature from Texas, from a known republic. So, it's just a matter of us getting this to council and getting them to review it and accept it. I don't wish I was an attorney, but I'm not. So, it's just approval. But there are several things that we need to look into. We're looking for the letter from the Department of Transportation, the DOT, on the driveway. We're looking for this to be approved, and we're looking for a solution on that force main. We're not, I'm not a designer, but I did ask him for specifics. And I don't feel that his, that, as the board, we got what we asked for.
On the, on the force main, so the, you know, talking about-
Well, he was putting the force main, the two-inch force main. I says, why can't we go to a three-inch with a bigger pump to make sure that we're going to pump that stuff all the way through? And it wasn't required by the designer. And I said, fine, he's the designer, he's the certified engineer there. So, but this is the reason why the town doesn't allow these on any of their subdivisions anymore, because of the problems that they've caused. So, we're just trying to stay proactive, keep the project going. But we need some answers on a few things. I think those are the only three.
But what are you looking for for the force main? Why we can't do a three-inch line?
No, no, it's done, you're installed.
Okay, okay, sorry.
You're installed.
I think with the ownership, because the town was requested to clear the line that is actually-
Someone's going to be responsible for that build, so.
And because it had been several days since that, you know, we should've been notified when the leak was discovered. We got a letter six days later. So, there was six days of backup. You know, eight vertical feet behind Nicoli, almost 20 vertical feet down on Nicoli Circle. And then there was only a foot of freeboard on the manhole that's connected to behind Route 1 Grill House. So, it was deemed an emergency to avoid an SSO, an overflow. And when the block was cleared out on Nicoli Circle, it cleared out the manhole down behind Autobody. But the one was still plugged, the private line. So, just to acknowledge going forward, that's, that'll be on Raising Canes to have Nicoli clean that out, right?
That's, that's the way I'd read the agreement.
That's, that's, it's-
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
That was the point of it, so.
Yeah, so I don't know, the request came to the town, and it kind of, you know, was an emergency. But, you know, in the future, I would stress that, you know, you have a clear kind of plan with Nicoli if there's a backup to get it resolved, you know, and keep the town informed. So, I think-
You have anything else?
I think that's all I got at this point.
So, we have three items that we're looking for attention on, which we just discussed. I think your attorney has written them down. And then bring it back, and I believe we can, but that's right. I believe we can move forward.
And the landscape is still planned for-
At the end of March, I was told.
Um, no, I don't believe that it was the end of March, given the weather. That, that's why we did a landscape bond, to come back and do it once the weather clears. Because right now, if we currently planted, it would still die.
Okay.
I, I think it was through to some point in April, but yeah. The intention is fully that Raising Canes will do the plantings to, according to the plans, as soon as the conditions are optimal.
So, the problem that I have with all that is we say we're going to do these things, they never get done, and we have no leverage against you to do them.
You have a line.
No, no, I understand, I got that out of, I was told that today from the building commissioner. So, and that's when he also informed me that he told me to go forward with training and applications and everything else. But they can't start with the public until we solve some of these issues.
I'm sure.
You're close, but-
Yeah.
I came up the hill Saturday, seen the fence gone, and actually drove right by your entrance. Because I, not that I was going fast, but it looked like it was all changed. I just looked, I actually drove through there yesterday. I says, the fire truck makes this right, right at the turn, I'd be amazed.
Oh, it did?
It did?
Yeah, they, they, absolutely did.
Did they do a test run?
I, I don't know if it does anything.
I see the radius, I see the radius on the plan.
I don't know if they've done it, but they run it with the fire truck.
It's just-
Able to.
That's a crazy entrance, and I have, I have a hard time believing that the DOT approved that. But that's on them, not on the town.
Yeah.
I just don't want to ever see anyone get killed there.
I met with them personally on site. We walked the entire site, and we didn't raise any concerns. Matter of fact, we've already talked about the grand opening, because we were anticipating it for 4:15, but I don't know that that's going to happen with this delay. So-
Next meeting next, is the 20th?
Yeah, that, that's really tight, though, because we still have to finish out some of the inspection items, like with the Board of Health, and they require that we get through some of these things.
Will we have Tetra Tech review the ASBIL?
I will now, yeah. He was going to try to get me over the punch list today, and it didn't happen. Because he didn't have a plan to go by, he was going by what his engineer documented, which is Tucker Parity from Tetra Tech.
Yeah, I, I believe we, we were originally approved of this plan. This meeting wasn't announced as had to be required. So, that's why we're, we were a little confused on what the checklist and what the closeout process is.
So, this normally, not the rub salt in the wound, but normally comes in two weeks prior to the meeting. And she understands the board members to go through the plan, take a look at it.
One week.
Make the, well, yeah, it's, it goes in the Thursday before meeting. So that we have the time to review it, and tonight, we just got it, so.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, you can rush, but-
Yeah.
So-
I don't understand the town council process. Is that a couple of weeks, or who knows?
No, I'll try to, we'll try to push that through. I'll give that to the chair tomorrow. And see if she can get an answer on that. She's pretty good with reaching Jesse on John.
Okay, I'd much appreciate it, because we've even worked with local PD, mass state police. Like, everybody's really aligned to try to get everybody open and, and do this safely for the town. And we have people pulling on site even now, trying to come and think that we're open. So, I know there's a lot of people that are just anxious, right?
It's been the talk for a while, I'll be honest.
So, we're, we're more than happy to-
We don't want to be the ones that holds you up. But if, like I said, if some of this stuff was given to us beforehand, then we probably wouldn't, we wouldn't have had the backup, we wouldn't have. I mean, anything's possible, but, but this is just stuff that we try to get out of the way with Matt.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked that as long as you're responsible all the way down to Forest Street, that, and we had that in writing.
Well, I, if the city council approves that, that would cover Raising Canes too.
Well, this, yeah, this will go to the town attorney.
Okay, yeah. And we'll, Fuller will work with Kevin on getting the rest of the items.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Is Matt still involved in the project?
Yeah, he had a conflict tonight, unfortunately.
Okay.
He apologized, couldn't be here, definitely wanted to be.
I didn't mean to put you before the Whitman post, but-
No, no, we appreciate it. We're just, I appreciate Kevin's position, doesn't have any of the history and lacking some of the stuff. I apologize if I've come off the wrong way, definitely, if you're where you're at.
But if you could get that stuff to the SAP?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks. If you're open to it, Matt, maybe we send Matt down, just sit down with you. Just walk through if you're open to that, or if you just prefer us to email it over, that's fine too, but whatever's-
No, probably best to go, go through them all and see that we got it. So, maybe you can take a first pass at it. And, you know, if, if we don't have things, we just acknowledge that we don't have it, and we either got to do it, or we're not going to do it, and this is why, you know, for each item.
Yeah, it's probably best Matt just brings all previous iterations and approvals. That way you-
Board, have any more questions?
No, sir.
Okay, make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to-
Continue?
Uh, continue the informal discussion.
Second favor. Motion passes three to zero.
Now, that's good. If you put on for continuums for your next meeting, maybe whatever, maybe we won't.
Well, whatever you can get in, it's that much more that's out of the way.
Yeah.
I know it's, it's time and it's money, but whatever we get out of the way, it's going to help you out tonight.
Yeah, and certainly, if we can work together and get, we'll make sure that everything gets thrown at this board before, a week prior to the next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get a second to that, David, but both of them.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now closed.
No.